All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Conservation Commission Wednesday, February 1st at 7:00 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order and it looks like we do have a quorum tonight. So I would, we have a guest this evening who I'd like to put on first, but prior to that, I'd like to get an approval for our past minutes, which is, believe it or not, from October, right Barbara? That was our last meeting?
No, it was November 30th, which is the joint meeting.
Oh, the joint meeting, November 30th. Oh, that's right. Okay, sorry. All right. So we have a, can I get a motion to approve the November minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, and a second? From Pam and all those in favor of approving minutes, I say aye.
Aye, approved.
Aye, okay. Very good. Okay, let's see. Okay, very good. So we can start the meeting this evening. Probably about a month or two ago, I asked our town engineer, Bill Maher, to join us just to share with the commission some of the updates on the Twin Brooks project that's going on. And I know it was approved in 2019, I believe. It's got its DEP approval. But of course, that was all before COVID. So things have been going on and people have been watching and curious. So Bill was kind enough to go to the bakery tonight and get a and share with us just an update on the Twin Brooks project. And I think we probably, if we have, we'll let Bill do his presentation and if there are some questions, we can take the questions from some of our panelists. So, Bill, you
You have to bear with me tonight. My computer's acting a little funky, but I will try to share my screen. And
There's John. Hi, John. Yeah, there you go. I got it.
Okay. So as you, everybody's well aware that this has been quite the long ongoing project. Construction wise, it's been long, but the planning part of this, as Mary Owens mentioned, wetlands permitted in 2019, but design probably started in 2015. And if you talked to Dimitri, he'll tell you it's been longer than that. One of the challenges of this project was the, the fact that Twin Brooks is all in a floodplain. Even as of last week, we had two foot of water over, over the surface. On the roadway was rather close to the the stream and always had a chance of washing out. I was there a couple rainstorms ago and had to walk over the bridge and take my shoes off and the water was above the park benches. So with that in mind, what, part of the goals of the project was to move the roadway further away from the, from the stream. And to create, if you notice that most people who walked through Twin Brooks walked in the road because there was a lack of a real sidewalk or a pedestrian way for them to walk in except for the road. So what we did was we moved the roadway around the herring pond. We diverted it. So it's two-way traffic and made a 10-foot wide bike trail that traverses where the road used to be. Actually, we, a lot of the path on the plan shown has changed quite a bit because you know, Dimitri always have to put his artistic thumb on everything. You know, there was trees that he really wanted to save and he, you know, he had, we had to tweak the the geometry of the roadway to go around trees and the, the actual walking path that we added on the opposite side here moved further away from the roadway because of the pinch point up by Pond 6. If you can see right here, the sidewalk and the road were very close together. We actually kicked out the path a little bit from the roadway. We, the original plan was to have a a gabion retaining wall here. We didn't like the looks of that and we changed it to a precast faced wall to match the rest of the walls that we put in. Over in here, this is where, at this point, it's just south of the parking lot off of Washington Street there. And this is where we tied back into the original roadway. And this here is the, the old the old roadway bed that we changed into a walking path. So we, we connected, all these ponds were connected at one time. One of the problems was that the useful life of the corrugated metal pipes was beyond its life. As you come down Booth Hill Brook, this takes a left turn here and the tendency was to go straight through into Pond 6. We added a four bay on the out, we, we put a a three-foot wide covert concrete covert in there. And on the outfall side, we, we put a four bay so that we could actually clean out the debris before it silts in. If you've been out there lately, you'll see a pond six is one of the ponds that we have to dredge. It's really, it's going to revert itself to a wetlands pretty soon if we don't do the dredging. So the water flows from Booth Hill into Pond 6. On the outlet of Pond 6, there's an outlet control structure that has that has flashboards that we can adjust the level of the water before it goes into Pond 5, which is right here. And then after that, we flow into there's another outlet control structure that feeds into the herring pond, which is Pond 4. There's also, as Booth Hill Brook comes through and feeds Pond 3, there's another covert over here that feeds into the herring pond. Another outlet control structure here going into Pond 2.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Because I'm a little turned around.
Sure.
Is Pond 4 the one in the middle now?
Pond 4 is the one in the middle, the herring pond.
So the, the top of this diagram is coming from where the comfort station is and going towards?
No, the comfort station is below.
Okay.
So Pond 2 is the big one that has the airator in it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I was completely turned around.
All right, no problem. So there's an outlet control structure from Pond 4, the herring pond that feeds into Pond 2. Then Pond 2 is ultimately what marries back into Booth Hill Brook is the outflow from that. There was another, there used to be a valve in there that never worked. And we put in another structure that had flashboards that we can adjust the level. Also has a a deep sump in there to catch any silt before it feeds back into Booth Hill Brook, which actually goes into Pond 1, which is the big pond that marries into the aquatic. Pond 1 is also slated for dredging also. The two dredging projects that we have are Pond 6 and Pond 1. Pond 1 has about 12,000 cubic yards of material to remove. We're looking into hydraulically dredging that, which means that we would be pumping water into bags and letting the, let it settle out and the water go back in. I don't think it's going to happen anytime real, real soon. The real, the real one that has to be done fairly soon is Pond 6, which is really, really in bad shape. And that has to be mechanically dredged. Which will be another project. And we're still working on the paving, the permitting portion of that. Planting, there's a planting plan that Dimitri did. Here's the planting plan. And doesn't mean, to me, I'm, I gotta be honest with you, plants are plants to me. I'm not a plant guy. I'm not, I can't tell one tree from another. It's either, it's either a Christmas tree or one that I have to rake. So, and so this was all done by Dimitri. It's pretty extensive in the sense that, I don't know, the budget item was about 1.150,000, 125,000, if I'm not mistaken. We did increase the, the length of the clearing. If you go out there, there was a lot of invasives and a lot of grading that had to be done. So you'll see sections that were, they look like they're devastated, but there, there's going to be planting going back in there. We did have a problem with with the hay bales that we had set up. We had a rainstorm come through and all the hay bales were staked and in the ground and right next along the stream and the stream took them all out. And they all ended up in Pond 1 and they were clogging up everything. So we, we actually removed them as best we could because it was, it was a disaster. We had everybody over on the other side calling every day. There's another one floating. And they were concerned that it would clog up the river and flood out their houses. And because of the fact that it flows into Pond 1 and we're planning on dredging that at some, at some point. It wasn't a bad a problem. And it actually was there today. Water was running nice and clean. There was damage from last week's storm that was pretty evident where the, the stream had breached the banks. I don't know if anybody was out there last week.
Yeah, over by the parking lot that's closer to Beaches Memorial Drive. That was completely washed out over there.
Yeah. Well, the aquatic always, always feeds over there too, and that flooded too. I know I went by in the morning and I was like, hmm, it looks like, it was only, I mean, we, it wasn't the two and a half inches of the rain we got. It was three inches before that in the previous weeks and everything was saturated.
Bill, or is Pond, is Pond 1 show up on this image?
Probably not because it really, let me see if I can get a better shot. But Pond 1 is a big pond at the very beginning. If you can see my cursor here?
Yeah, yep.
This is, this is Pond 1. It's, it's at the end of Larkspur and I think it's Greenwood. There's a parking, there's the parking lot here and the comfort station. This is actually part of the river. Now, you don't know if you know the history of this area. This was a quarry where they actually pulled out all the gravel. It was a gravel pit. But it's, has a history of flooding and some of this work was done to mitigate the damage of the flooding. Dimitri, like I said, he put his, you know, we, we've moved some of these trails over a little bit further away from the road. This is a regular sidewalk and on this side is the bike trail slash 10-foot wide plus or minus for you know pedestrians. And then Dimitri's dreaming about making an ice skating pond here out of the parking lot. So, so we're working on that. We don't know if we have budget for it. Some of the other changes you may see in the park is that Dimitri last year took and put sidewalks from the, the entrance from the covered bridge and all the way past the comfort station. And that's going to eventually connect to this so that there'll be basically a sidewalk from White Plains Road all the way through the park. So, and, and in last year's budget, I had a, I wanted to extend the walking trail and bring it up to beaches. But it got shot down.
Yeah. So right now, Bill, this connects with that black top road kind of by the waterfall up towards beaches? That the trailer goes into the woods?
Yeah, well, we wanted to bring it up and bring it through to make it, you know, more of a pedestrian. So it would be a bike trail, pedestrian walk. It'd be like a spur off of the aquatic river trail.
Okay, yeah.
You can kind of do it now, but it's, you kind of know your way around.
It needs more, a little more work.
This is a much better Yeah, Bill, now that just reduce the flooding, did you have to increase the elevation of the road?
No, we, we moved it over so that the impact would be less. The, the velocity of the water is, is in the stream. It's actually pretty slow moving when it gets to the surface. So the concern was the closeness of the road to the stream. That's where you would have a problem. That's why we moved it over. Just so that we would reduce that risk. And then also, if you, if you would have driven through the park and looked over to the right-hand side, it was really close to the water. It was like right there.
And then of course, probably increasing the covert flow helped also to reduce flooding.
Actually, we, we needed to, you know, net change was, was, we had to keep the flow going the same way. You know, they were, they were, they didn't want us to starve off the stream. And at the same time, we didn't want to overpower the ponds. So all this was permitted by DEP because they were, you know, they didn't want to, you know, you don't want to take water from the stream and have the stream go away, you know what I mean?
I'm there every weekend and I can certainly see that there's been a lot of progress. But when do you think you'll be finished with the project?
Well, all, all, all the drainage structures are in, right now, they're, they're finishing up some of the retaining walls around Pond 6. That pretty much finishes out the structural portion of the, of the project. And from there, it's basically planting and paving, paving and planting. I would suspect that we'd be late spring, we'll be all done. I think that we're gonna, when this thing opens up, it's, it's gonna be quite something. It really is. When I, I walk there and I'm even amazed how well it's gonna look.
Yeah. It's a nice park.
Yeah, and I think while the improvements that we've done have only, you know, made it even nicer. I, the connections and the walking portion of this, I I mean, I driven, I remember driving through this and half the time you'd have to wait for people to get out of the way because the people would be walking in the road.
Yeah.
Which isn't a very safe thing.
Is there any change in, in the parking area, parking spaces at all?
Well, yeah, I can't really say that. And so if you look here, this is where the parking spaces for the pavilion. This is where Dimitri wants to put in a concrete curb around this so that he could actually put a plastic liner and then pump water from the aquatic in there in the winter time and let it freeze to make an ice skating pond. Which is actually pretty clever because of the fact that it's, you know, you don't have to worry about somebody falling through and drowning or you know, it would actually probably freeze quicker and it'd probably stay longer.
Of course, that assumes that winter actually starts.
Yeah, that's right. But I think we're going to get a little taste this weekend.
We are, yeah. Friday, maybe zero or below on Friday. So tell Dimitri to finish it up tomorrow so we can have ice for a day or two. By the way, did anybody ever name these ponds or anything, like real names or anything?
I, you know, I only know them by their numbers. I don't know if there's any historical names to any of them. There was some trees that had names, you know, people that donated them. But I don't know anything about the ponds.
So do any of the other commissioners have questions before I ask if the public would, has any questions and those of you who are in the public? If you could just hit the raise hand button, you should be able to, well, we should see your name and then Bill Chin can let you in. So let's see, does any other commissioners have questions? Bill, no. Okay. Looks like any, anybody in the public have any questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Smith will be first, followed by Mr. Long.
Okay. All right, Ms. Janelle Smith, if you could unmute yourself and then introduce yourself, give us your address, please. And if you're ahead, thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I live at 55 Larkspur, Janelle Smith with my husband Ricky. We are on the lowest part of Pond 1. Or I would, you know, where we have the lowest wall of all of Pond 1. So last week when you were talking, the water came up about six feet two from our reef, from the bottom of the pond to our property. And it floods quite frequently. So when was the dredging of Pond 1 going to be done? I, I heard some of that, but I didn't catch it all.
So we're in the design phase and the permitting phase of dredging Pond 1 and Pond 6. There's no funding in place yet for it, but there's only placeholders in the five-year capital plan. You're on Larkspur, you're the last house on the left, I believe, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Larkspur has a history because this whole area is a floodplain. On, you know, it is flood, it's gonna flood. I mean, I can't stop that. No matter what we do, we can't stop it. So.
Okay, well, and you know what? Just, just for the notes for the meeting and everybody has the same issue on the street, probably. I mean, our flood insurance due to flooding has gone up to $5,500 a year. And I can't even get it from anybody else. So just keep that in mind for Pond 1 and the end of Larkspur because you know, every time it rains, I do quite a bit of praying.
But it's, you know, you know, I'm, I'm sorry to say this, but it's like a bathtub though. I mean, we're gonna dredge it out. It's gonna fill up with water. It's when it rains and it floods, it's gonna do the same thing.
I think eventually Larkspur is gonna be part of the park. When we're, when none of us are around anymore, this, this whole area is gonna be part of your park.
Okay, we'll let it, we'll go to the next person. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Janelle. I think the next question was Robert Long. If you could just tell us your address?
Sure. Robert Long, it's 24 Greenwood Drive.
Okay.
Couple of things. One is obviously the same concerns as far as when, when is the dredging going to take place? Apparently that's a five-year plan, nothing imminent. Two is on the base of my property, there is an easement with regards to a storm drain that pours in from the corner of Greenwood and Wesley. There are stairs that go down into the water from, from the, from the top of the property. Due to all the flooding, that entire stairwell is falling apart and falling into the lake. That all needs to be rebuilt.
We'll have to look at it. I mean, I'm not familiar with that. We'd have to look into that.
So, so there is an easement there and four or five steps, I'd say the last two to three steps have crumbled away due to the floodings and all the water that comes up and it's just eroded all the, all the cement. And so from that standpoint, that is something that needs to be addressed. And do we also address the, the outflow going into the aquatic out of Pond 1? And is that dredged or cleaned annually to ensure for a smooth flow of water? So that it doesn't back up?
That's all gonna be part of the dredging plan.
But on an annual basis, I mean, to go through there and make sure that logs and debris that, that are, that get washed downstream are usually stuck in that corner down there. And so that needs to be cleaned out on an annual basis to limit the, to, to open up the water flow.
We'll have to look into it. I, I don't, you know, so this was, I didn't even bring the plans for the dredging because this was a Twin Brooks Park project that we're talking about. But you know, I do, I do know that the dredging is very, I don't know if I've spoken to you before about this?
No.
One of the neighbors on Greenwood, I've spoken to quite a few times.
I know exactly who you're speaking about.
Yep. So but we, you know, this is something that's, it's in the, it's in our mind and we're not going to let it go away.
Yeah, I mean, we've, I mean, I've lived here 23 years and 2007 was a horrific year for the floods. And I think everybody in the entire neighborhood was, was affected severely during that year. And then again, several years ago, where we had another flooding back in 2016, 2017, somewhere thereabouts. And you know, I can say that the water, my house is probably one of the furthest houses away from the water line. And the water came all the way up to the massive maple that's in my backyard. And beyond that, it was as high as the five-foot fence that sits around the perimeter of my yard. And it, that's how high the water level was. So when you look at the, the neighborhood, these, these storms are increasing the floodplains and, and the, the amount of water that's being able to flow back out of these ponds is not sufficient to keep up with the amount of water that comes in. I know that other times we've had Dimitri look at the fact that, you know, when the water comes out of, out of the, the aquatic, there, there, there used to be a wear up there. And that was then taken down. And now that the EAP is saying that we can't put another one in because of wetlands to slow the flow of water into Twin Brooks. You know, when Pinewood overflows, all that runs down the side rivers into these, these lakes. And so again, is there a way to put some funding together to put a new valve in? Right? Up at Pinewood, even though I know it's a, it's a private association, right?
So
Because that valve is the only thing that has saved us in several other storms. Because, because somebody on, on their committee voluntarily went in, opened the valve, drained it three or four days ahead of major storms. And allowed that to become a catch basin, right? As opposed to an overflow.
Yeah, Pinewood Lake has a whole plan of action to take in, in the course of a, you know, but that all takes, you know, if you remember 2016, when we had that massive rainstorm that lasted for three or four hours and we got six inches of rain?
Yeah, I know.
How do we deal with that?
Right. But what I'm talking about storms that, that, that are preventable, right? Storms that we know that are coming down the road. There are several days in advance that we can take
What to do and you know, how they monitor that.
And we actually had pushback where the town basically told Pinewood not to open the lake. Pinewood did it on their own. And they eventually did, they ended up saving lower, the lower part of, of from the center as well as the other, the, the, the other residents around this pond and around these other lakes. So, you know, you say it takes time, but we've been, we've been complaining about this for over 20 years. And nothing's been done in that 20 And nothing's been done in that twenty twenty three years that I've been living here.
Well, we've we've made some small steps forward. I just unfortunately, you know, the permitting process for all this, um, even for Twinbrooks, it took uh three plus years.
Right. Again, three years, I get that. We've been complaining for twenty three. Um, and so from that standpoint, right, you know, we're a little frustrated at at the same time. You know, as residents and as taxpayers and as, you know, the the when I when I moved in, my flood insurance was eight hundred and fifty dollars. Unlike unfortunately, this poor woman that was on earlier who's paying over five, I'm not paying five. Um, but nonetheless, it's still almost three grand.
Yeah, it's quite expensive.
Right? So from eight hundred dollars to three thousand dollars on top of our own property taxes that have gone from 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 three thousand to ten. Right? So it's a it's a big major expense that, you know, we have to deal with on top of everything else that takes place and the fear of every time it rains, as she said, you know, what's gonna happen? I throw soccer flags out every ten yards, so I know how quick the water is coming up my up my property. I measure this out and I and I track it so that I know, all right, guys, it's time to get out of the house. Right? We're 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 about to lose everything.
Hey, Bill, I wonder, have we ever done like a hydraulic study showing yeah, different flows of what we can do to, you know, at least control some of this issue?
So we, in order to get permitting for all this, we had to do a hydraulic study up and down the stream in order to um get the permitting for the uh for the 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 work we've just done in the park.
Yeah. Now, is there
So this is all a a map floodway on this whole area. And including the the area around Pond One.
Yeah.
But also when when the when the the Army Corps of Engineers came in and rerouted the aquatic and and put those in, they put too many turns in. And that also slows the flow of water and forces that to also flood back into the park. So there there's there's been a number of missteps, um, you know, from from the from the beginning with the Army Corps of Engineers to um, you know, the lack of 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 addressing some of these issues coupled with, you know, just year and year having to deal with these 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 rainstorms that come through. And unfortunately, you know, they're not getting any any easier, right? Where weather patterns are changing. And so, you know, that fear just, you know, amplifies every spring for us.
And now, Bill, Mr. Long had mentioned about the um the wear and the inlet. Is that something that could be put back in or would that make something else worse?
I'm not aware of any of that. I'd have to I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, we were told that because of of it being a um a wetland that it was a uh a danger to the habitat in the area and that any flooding from that regard. But I don't right, I don't I don't I don't see why the flooding of a wear versus the 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 normal rainfall flooding that takes place is going to damage the habitat that much.
When did they take the notched wear out? Do you know?
A long time ago. I mean, I think that was originally, they they used to do ice. They would it was done, the wear was taken out many, many years ago.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're still
There's remnants of it, but it's not, it's not there.
Yeah. So um, Mr. Long, you mentioned um that log jam area where all of the debris piles up and um you know, coming out of, I guess, Pond One where the river meets.
Coming out of Pond One on the far side, heading towards Bridgeport. Uh, there's that outlet cove there, uh, heading over towards the um what, well, no, no, Texaco, what is it? Uh, Shell Station there.
Yeah, okay. So um, I I spoke with Dimitri Paris about it uh last week because I noticed that whole area was really cleared out. And it was done for that purpose to all the debris and everything was moved out of there. And it's going to be, the plan is to keep that um as clear clear and as open as possible. There's no plans to put any more, uh, I think vegetation in there just for that reason, that he anticipates having to clear that out. Um, uh, it very frequently, uh, whether it's every year or every couple of years, but when it starts to build up again, because uh so um, so it's interesting that you brought that up because that you know, they did clear it out and the plans are to keep that as an open access for
Yeah, I mean, you know, when when I was able to have a boat on the lake, um, a rowboat, I would I would head down there and then you get about five feet into that little channel and it was just limbs and debris everywhere. And it and then there was even a uh a beaver back there that was building a dam at one point.
So is that, um, Bill, do you know if that, you know, coming from Pond One there, um, you know, Pond was created, but um, was that a natural intersection into the aquatic there or was that an engineered?
I believe it was a natural at one time. I mean, well, I guess that this was all a quarry at one time.
Yeah.
So probably had a stream going through it. But, you know, it was Pinewood Lake was a quarry too, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that whole stretch. So but Booth Hill Brook goes up even further than Pinewood Lake. It goes up into Shelton.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a large drainage basin that feeds that whole that whole area.
Yeah.
So Bill, should I should I put some pictures together of that easement uh in that drain in the steps?
I'll look it up. I'll find it. I'll find it, you know. Um, we'll take a look and see what
I was fishing over there and almost ended up breaking my legs because peace came out from underneath me.
Yeah. I'll look it up.
So long were the steps intended so that you could access, go swimming in the pond? Is that why they were there?
I think it was access for either swimming or access to the main drain because it drains off the street into the pond. So there's a drain that comes off of the corner of Wesley and Greenwood down along my property and then enters into the pond.
Yeah, well, Mr. Long, do you do you see those steps as being still being useful? Or have they stopped?
I would say the first two or three and then they they're all corroded. And and the the cement is just being chewed up and everything's just falling off.
Yeah, because even if it's a safety hazard, then they should either be, you know, fixed or or replaced. Or if they're not reusable, maybe just being abandoned, put, you know, some nice
We'll have to look at it. We'll have to look at it. I mean, you know, without actually seeing it and evaluating what we need to do.
Yeah.
So um, it unless the public has any other uh questions, um, I'm sure Bill is um, open for folks reaching out to him during the week. Um, we want to just be able to get on with the rest of our meeting and we don't want to bore you guys with the rest of our meeting. So
Anybody has any questions, uh, you can feel free to reach out. I'll be more than happy to answer.
Great, thank you. I wanted to, you know, give you about a half hour to present this and this is very helpful. Um, the planting plan um that Dimitri did is quite good. Um, I can't seem to find my version of it, but it is, it's very extensive and it's all native trees and shrubs. So um, it'll create, I think, a very nice buffer. Um, but that's something we can talk about in the future with Dimitri because that won't be done probably this year or next year.
Yes, oh, for sure.
Yeah.
It better be done this year.
Okay, so we'll talk to Dimitri about that. So thank you very much, Bill. I appreciate your uh your input this evening and um you guys can enjoy the rest of your meeting, I mean, your evening, and thanks for to the public for for coming on as well.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. So we can continue on with our um General Conservation Commission meeting. Um, I wanted to uh take the opportunity to review um twenty twenty two and our plans for twenty twenty three. So I'm going to share the screen, if I can. Uh, let's see, um. Wow, I was so organized and now I can't find my work. Uh, anyway, let me clear off my screen here. Apologies. Three. Strange, I can't seem to find my uh my document. Okay, so um let's go on to uh the next one. Hopefully I can find that too. It seems like they go. Sorry, guys, I tried to be really organized today, as you noticed by all the emails that I sent, and then I stored my stuff so that I could find it.
That was the problem.
Yeah. It's called Murphy's Law.
Uh, for the meeting, come on. Oh, there you go. Let me show you. No, 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 no. Uh, I don't know, whatever. So I'll just read off to you. Um, just in general, I met with Vicky, uh, the first select woman for our budget. And part of the budget discussions require um us, me, to discuss our successes and accomplishments accomplishments from twenty from this past year. Uh, so you know, the accomplishments, of course, were, you know, the completion of that survey uh which Sarah designed and we um sent out to the public in April. Uh, and that was a great survey which really informed our our um you know, projects for the rest of the year and for the years coming forward. So uh, that was completed. There was a strong level of support for tree replacement and open space protection. Um, and Sarah presented the survey results. She curated them and presented them to economic development as well as the town land use staffs, including um, Bill Mara and his team so that they could get a sense for um the temperature of the town in terms of uh, tree replacement, open space protection, things like that. Um, as a result of that, we started our outreach for Thousand Trees uh for Trumbull. Um, at least um very preliminary outreach for that. Um, we tried to gain some support for a Trumbull Community Garden, but there was no um progress on that at this point. Um, we did as a as a team um created a number of advisory letters to inland wetland this year and uh had some significant success, especially in some of the applications that were really um uh had had major impact on the regulated area. So um all of the efforts that we put in for these advisory letters to inland wetland in our hearings um have have paid off, which is a really a nice thing to see happen. Um, and then also, uh, last year Pam completed our native plant list for new development landscape plans. Um, and that that was set to our land use boards, both planning and zoning and inland wetlands. So um, we basically um achieved uh, you know, most of our goals from last year. Um, and it was a super busy year. The goals and objectives that that are on the same form for coming up. Um, as I was writing these, I realized that I think we're in for a really fun year. For the for the goals that we have coming up are gonna be really interesting, I think, for everybody because as you know, we did get the twelve thousand dollars approved by Town Council to um uh, to help support the planting um of uh uh, just around a hundred trees. We're shooting for a thousand trees for Trumbull over ten years, so that's a hundred trees a year. Um, we did get approval for that. And uh, that funding is going to be put into place um this first quarter of uh of twenty twenty three. And I'll show you the design um that was developed by Dimitri Paris for Twinbrooks. Um, also, in addition to that, uh, we got approval from um the owner of Long Hill Market to actually replant the rain gardens that are in on that site. Uh, part of that development included two rain gardens with signage. Uh, but unfortunately, as usually happens, a lot of what they planted didn't come up. So we got permission from the owner up there to do a re-landscaping plan for those rain gardens. Um, and um so Pam worked on a really nice rain garden list. We presented it to the owner and he has approved it. So uh, what we're gonna do now is just kind of calculate the cost of those plans and see how much uh it's gonna cost. I don't think it'll be a lot and and if he will pay for it or we get some support in that way. Um, the next goal is to continue our support for waterside native buff buffer demonstration sites um at Katz's Pond. That's another uh, plan. It's a town owned property for a rebuilding of Veterans First Responder Center there, and it is right on Katz's Pond. And because the original building was there, the new one has been grandfathered in for that spot. Uh, the building committee has asked the Conservation Commission for help um, designing a very healthy native buffer plan and in the future, a pollinator planting uh plan for around the parking lot. So uh, Pam and I worked on the list for that and finished it in the nick of time. The uh, the building committee for the Veterans Center goes before Inland Wetlands next week. So um, uh, we're hoping that the project will be approved. Uh, of course, we will not be doing any planting there until that whole project gets the money it needs and then the construction's finished. Uh, they're gonna be doing dredging there as well. So I don't think that we're gonna be doing planting there within uh, you know, maybe within a two year period or maybe three. Um, and what is connected to that is a new brochure on waterside plantings, which um we are going to adapt for Trumbull residents. And um, it's uh, we think we can get some money to print that. I think when we met in person, we looked at it. It was called um uh, riparian buffers or backyard buffers, and we changed it to Trumbull Waterside buffers. And having that printed to go out to our lake communities, so Pinewood Lake, Anubrook Lake, Threshwood Lake, Dogwood Lake, anybody who lives on the Paquonic River, anybody who butts up to um water and wetlands, um, will get this brochure. And finally, um, we have, because we're doing this Thousand Trees for Trumbull, we have a planting plan. We pretty much finished our tree management plan. Um, we're applying for Tree City certification. Um, the plan is to mail it on this Friday. Uh, we have all the ingredients for it and um hope that if we get approval, well, that's the Arbor Day Foundation that manages that. Um, it'll number one, open us up for other grant opportunities because we will be a certified tree city. Um, and also that we can announce hopefully uh when we begin the planting plan for Twinbrooks, when we begin the planting process. Maybe we'll have a celebration and then we can get our Tree City um designation for that, which would be really great. Um, so uh, let's see, let me see if I can, Pam and Tim, I know, Tim, you um
Are you hearing me now?
Oh, I can hear you now.
There we go. All right.
So um, if you, Tim is is leading the charge on the Thousand Trees for Trumbull Initiative. Um, and he and Pam and Dimitri uh and Mary Isaac, who's on here too, uh, went for a site walk. Um, so if you guys wouldn't mind sharing with the commission how the site walk went. Um, and I'm gonna look for Dimitri's plan on my desktop here to share it with you guys.
Uh, yeah, so I'll go ahead. Now, I think we met a couple of weeks ago uh with Dimitri, myself, Pam Roman and Mary Isaac. And we walked the site uh where the, you know, the initial push for the tree planting is going to be around the main field there at Twinbrooks Park. Uh, Dimitri was very amiable and very cooperative. Uh, actually Dimitri was very amiable and very cooperative. Actually, it was a very, very nice, pleasant meeting. And we came up with a game plan and he produced the plan, which I don't know if you can share it on the screen. And I shared with Dimitri a. A proposal that we have from a nursery in upstate New York for the town of Greenwich that he said the town of Trumbull can piggyback on. For a, you know, for a supply for the trees and. He understood that he seemed that it would be very reasonable to purchase from them, and he was going to reach out to see. What their schedules were, what their fees were, and if they were going to honor the prices that we have with the town of Greenwich for the town of Trumbull. And so we are, we have the plan. It's up in front of us. I just saw it today. There's maybe a couple of tree species that I would like to add to that, but overall, I think it's a nice plan and. You know, actually, so Dimitri or the Parks Department is going to plant the trees and was very cooperative with. The aftercare, at least for the first year. And so it actually went very well and, you know, so I couldn't be more pleased. I don't know if anybody wants to add Pam or Mary.
Just I agree 100%. It was, it was. Fantastic. I was very excited to see the level of cooperation and. Excitement on Dimitri's part for this project. So. It was a love fest. So it's exciting that this is going to be happening.
I don't know if I qualify as a love fest, but it was close. But yeah, it was good. It was very quick. There's a lot of open space there for planting, I think. To get the, the first phase of this with the trees in the ground. There's plenty of room here. It's not going to be crowded. I think it'll really benefit from an environmental point of view. From a visual point of view, from a well-being aesthetic point of view with the park. But I think this is a good step for us to get our systems in place in regards to the first phase of the planting. And then, you know, kind of figure out after this is done. Where we're going to go from here, whether it be more parks, street trees, which, you know, has its own list of issues. But I think this is a really good first step for us to get, you know, like I said, systems in place.
And with the park reopening, kind of like a grand opening for the new park, I think it's going to be a well-traveled park. It's a great opportunity for marketing publicity about the Thousand Trees for Trumbull Plan and just. About native plantings. Like, there's so many good things about this particular location for our first year. In this 10-year plan. So it's all good.
Yeah, it's very, it's very exciting. I kind of looked up a lot of these trees because there are some that, you know, I've not seen. In the wild, certainly. These are, with the exception of one, they are all native keystone species. So the. Botanical names are what he listed by and ordered by, but. The English names are basswood, willow oak, black tupelo, white oak, red maple. And green hawthorn. And the prunus one is the one that, that's actually a Korean cherry. So I've asked him to replace that with, there are three prunus species that are native. And our theme here is to plant this as a native, kind of an arboretum. So people can walk through and see these clusters of, you know, amazing native trees that benefit the ecosystems. And so we want to stick with that and make this really pure American native trees. And I like the way that Dimitri laid them out because they're in, some of them are in nice clusters. So you'll get a really strong visual impact of a certain species of tree, and then that'll also give a nice impact for biodiversity. He did add a couple more species to this, Tim, because he was. That weren't on this plan. And the, and the goal is to actually plant this in layers. So some of these are. Bigger trees, some are medium-sized trees. You can tell by the size of the dot, and then the smaller species. So this way you have a typical layered effect as you walk that pathway. And that sidewalk actually has some really nice benches on it. So the goal is, this is phase one. This used up pretty much all of our $12,000. I just asked yesterday or Monday for the next fiscal year for another $12,000, and that will do phase two here. If you're familiar with this big open space, it's kind of wet. Obviously, everything is wet in Twin Brooks. But it's a big open field that's really underutilized, with the exception of the lower quadrant where the. Playground is. So the goal is to just begin to fill this in with very strategically planted. Native plants. And I think it's going to really just look beautiful. And so I'm pretty excited about this. This is kind of like a dream come true to have a first launch of this and not, you know, meet any resistance, but actually create a partnership with the town. And a few days after the team walked, I couldn't join them, so I went a couple of days later and met with Dimitri. And we walked over the bridge to the Veterans Memorial. And he presented an idea for us to also plant a pollinator garden along the Veterans Memorial Walk. So there's a very long walkway that comes from. Kind of where the, I guess, the crossing area is. Through the Veterans Memorial, very long walkway. Adjacent to that is, it's probably like a four-foot wide buffer now, but. His idea was to plant maybe up to a 10-foot wide buffer of native pollinator plants. So that's something else that we, as a commission, have been invited to work with on him. This will be Pollinator Pathway. Project. And I think it's really cool because it's right at the entrance when you come off of the parkway. And you stop at the light there. And of course, the Veterans Memorial is right in front of you. They're going to be sprucing that up a bit more, but to have the pollinator pathway begin there. And work its way down into this arboretum of, of keystone trees, I think is just really great. I like the, I like the idea of it. I like the flow of it. And of course, I had my heart set on starting with street tree plantings. But it's not to say that that can't be a future phase. We have success with this. And I think we will. Have success with this. These are going to be ball and burlap trees, very high-quality trees that come in. Thank you, Tim, for working with the town and sharing the. The, the company, the nursery that provides these trees for Greenwich. And so we're going to be using the same supplier that the town of Greenwich uses.
Right. Now, the key is going to be logistics of getting the trees, excuse me, and getting them in the ground before, you know, the Parks Department gets real busy. So, you know, by the second week in April, you know, I don't know what exactly his logistics or. Work schedule is to get them in the ground as early in the spring as possible, get them watered in, and then, because they're going to get busy with other things, so.
Yeah, okay. And that, that would be fabulous to get them in early, have them planted and ready to go. Arbor Day is the 28th of April, I think, 28th, 29th. And that would be really amazing to have. You know, have these trees in and looking, you know, in the ground and, you know, some ground, some mulch there, and then have an Arbor Day celebration there to kick off. The decade of Thousand Trees for Trumbull. So that would be really cool.
And Mel, does Dimitri have any plans for signage at all for people to educate them what they're looking at?
Yes, we talked about that. That would be something that, and I also met with Rena Bacalar, who's the community and economic development. Director, outreach director. And so she really loves this plan and she is, you know, able to visualize us. Applying for some grants that can help. With the signage, kind of maybe similar to the signage that was done at. At Old Mine. We can do a similar signage here. It was kind of like a three. Three faces, you know, where we can. Discuss the, the functioning of this. Planting and the benefits to the river, benefits to air quality, the habitat, all those things. So, yes. There are plans to do signage here and at the, at the Pollinator Pathway Garden as well.
Exactly. That way we could kind of advertise, you know, Thousand Trees for Trumbull, you know, put that as kind of a, you know, kickoff.
Yeah, so that's. That's the plan. The other thing to help the kickoff, Richard, is. That brochure, the original brochure was you can't unchop a tree. So Pam has been working on some changes to that and. You know, this, this whole thing with Twin Brooks just emerged really, literally within the past two weeks. So it's a great opportunity to kind of tailor that brochure. We have money in the budget to print and mail that brochure. Prior to whatever kickoff we do. So it would be great to have the whole town get that brochure, and we can announce this program. So, pretty. Pretty exciting.
It'd be sort of fun to have some sort of a, like a, like a town get together. I mean, there may not be that. Maybe it would show up, but just, you know, potentially advertise it as a way to kick off. Yeah, I don't know. We could hand out seedlings or just something to attract attention to. I mean, this park's really well-used. It's a great place to have these trees, first trees planted. But then signage also would really help. You know, I think, you know, along with the, the sign that, you know, Don did at Old Mine. You know, the key include QR codes like we did there also. I can see linking to Pam's list. You know, a native species list, things like that. To, you know, try to educate people on all this stuff.
Yep, that's, that's our goal is to do outreach and education, get people to see these as a demonstration site, and then. You know, hopefully to get them to actually buy them and get these natives into their own properties and get, you know, the pollinators. Plantings in there too.
I'm sorry, Richard. One thing to remember about Twin Brooks is that's where the Trumbull Community Women do their. Usually do their setup for. Earth Day cleanup. And that's the 22nd. So that's prior to Arbor Day. So it'd be nice to kind of have like a whole shindig around Earth Day, Earth Week. Maybe we can do something around, I mean, it's kind of early, a little early to be planting for the pollinator garden, but maybe we could do something. Hand out something about the Pollinator Pathway or something like that around that.
Oh, that would be great. So they can just like clean up the river there in the park in advance. That's right. That's Earth Week. Yeah. All right, excellent. Yeah, so this is, this is fun. I mean, this is a project that. When I just had up, you know, the, the Twin Brooks one is, it's, it's perfect timing. And I think also with, you know, as, as Bill Marr shared with us. The completion of at least the. The bigger part of Twin Brooks Park. So there could be just a, you know, I know that Vicky was really excited about. That being completed and this also, and so it might be a good opportunity. To have a little celebration there at Twin Brooks. So I wanted to share with you on this screen, this is the Veterans Center plan. On Katz's Pond. Here's the pond. This is the water. This is the building plan. As you can see, it goes right up to the edge of the pond. This is a deck. And so the architect, George Wiles, sent us this plan and asked. If we could just take a look at it and give them some recommendations for planting. So. Pam. Developed a really, really nice list of. Riparian shrubs. We're really focusing on the shrubs right now and some trees. Luckily, they're not taking down any of the big trees that are there. There's a big spruce here, and there's some big ones back here. And they're, they're really keeping. The trees on the property and we're going to remove invasives. So. Pam, who's a master gardener now, worked on this beautiful buffer planting, which was informed by the. The buffer brochure that we looked at the last time we met together. So. So Pam, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to kind of share about this plan?
No, but one of the things that, that I thought was really interesting and great. As a response from the architect, George, is that. He's expecting community engagement after the, that these plantings are put in. So, you know, I had put in some marsh marigolds and other things. And he goes, no, no, you know, he wants community engagement around what we're putting in, provided this all gets built and done. I think that's a wonderful thing to have community come in and do the wildflower gardens. As long as it's all native. So I thought that was brilliant.
Right along the pond there with kind of darker green is, what is the ground surface around the shrubs and plantings?
Um, there's nothing there yet. What our plan is to have. What's referred to as a green mulch. So it's, it's a native, you know, ground covers. So native ground covers to fill in as much. You probably have to do some, you know, sweet peter mulch originally, until every start, things start to fill in. But we really want to start putting in plugs of. Ground covers, native ground covers.
Sorry, where, where is he talking about? Back on the backside of the parking lot?
It's basically. It's the right side of the building. And you have the darker green, the bottom part's curved by that big spruce. Top part was curved.
There's stuff growing there now. There's, there's all kinds of things growing there now. It's mostly overgrown scot. It's not, there's very few quality plantings there now. It's just been neglected forever.
Yeah. Yeah, but so it would be things where we wouldn't have to cut with a lawnmower and fertilize stuff. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, no. Yeah, no fertilization there. It's all natives. It's all meant to clean the water and hold the, the edge. So no, everything in there, there won't be any pesticides. And in the back. It was actually George, the architect's idea also to put a pollinator garden along the back of the parking lot. And so that's going to be a different phase. So we didn't do a planting plan for that yet. But it was his idea to make that a Pollinator Pathway Garden. And he actually said Pollinator Pathway. So I was pretty impressed. He knew to even say the right words to make us listen.
He did his research.
Yes, he certainly did. So, yeah, so that was great. And, and I know that. Matt, you have a lot of interest in native plants as well. So, you know, all of these projects will, because you've been. You've been replanting your property as well. So it would be kind of fun to have. Projects for you to, you know, kind of meet your passion, which is planting native plants on this, on all of these projects. So. We'll get you rolling in the dirt with the rest of us, Matt.
I would, I would welcome that. My kids are called wormologists, so I can get some other help too. Finding worms in that dirt. Yeah, thanks.
That would be great. That would be great. Okay, so this, so, you know, when I say we've got a couple of fun things lined up and they're pretty. You know, visual as well. And even better, I did find what I was looking for before. See if I can pull this up. This is the budget. Narrative that I sent you guys that I was reading from before. So this just kind of went over. What we did and what the plans are going forward, which includes everything that we're talking about right now. Oh, and I did. Find out from Rena Bacalar that the Plan of Conservation and Development, yay, is going to be started at the end of 2023, in the fall of 2023. They're going out for funding for a. There's companies that do these plans of conservation and development. So that was really good news because the last one that we have is 2014. So it is definitely time. Um, so it is definitely time for a new P O C D. And I also mentioned to Rena about, um, our attempts at, you know, making some changes to the zoning regulations. And she said, unfortunately, the regulations have been kind of still at a standstill. Um, and so she was going to take our request where my cursor is for this steep slope. Um, back to, uh, the planner and see if we can, you know, that's a really simple change that we've been waiting for since last March. So it's almost a year for a simple change. Um, but, uh, you know, maybe we need to do a presentation of planning and zoning and, and get them kind of motivated about, you know, making some of these important changes. Cause, you know, we'll be right there with them.
Anybody have an idea when P and Z may actually, uh, uh, update the plan and approve it?
The, uh, no, nope. Um, do you remember there was a gentleman by the name of Don Poland who worked with us a couple of years ago when we were, um, we were coming up to some of these regulation changes we were presenting to him. And so, um, then COVID hit and everything just stopped. Um, so they're still in that, you know, quiet phase where, um, there's no major changes, uh, going on. So, uh, yeah, according to Rena, there's no plans right now, um, to make some cha- to make, uh, any major changes. Um, this that would require, you know, a big process that I guess they were not prepared for.
Mel, can I ask a question about goals and objectives for the coming year?
Yes.
Is it a fool's errand to continue to hope for, um, the community garden change?
Um, no, I don't, I don't know. Don't think so.
We had a great, we, we brought George Estrada to Westport's Community Garden. I thought he seemed very wowed by it. But then I didn't hear, we haven't heard anything since then about whether it's possible or we should just let it go. So I'm not really sure if it's worth putting it on the list. But I was up there last fall at our community garden and it's really, it's a shame. It, it'd be so much more.
Yeah. And you know, so Pam, what do you think of, you know, of a first step, just kind of revitalizing the one that's there now? If we just started with that and asked for that to be completely fenced in, like Westport. Um, I don't know if, if, I, I think that their hesitation is, as you know, is to get another project on their plate that was going to rely on the residents to.
Volunteer project is, is tough. It is tough. And I know that without the guy Lou in Westport, that community garden wouldn't run away. But I also know that if you don't start somewhere, you don't get anywhere. So, I mean, right now, if you, I don't know about right now, but when I went in the fall, it was just, everything was overgrown and left. And, um, it was kind of depressing, actually. It could be so much more. There's so much room up there. So I don't know. I just, I didn't know if you had had a subsequent conversation with George, if it's worthwhile to bring it up again. I don't know if Dimitri even has an opinion on it, but.
Yeah, no, um, I haven't had any updates on that or conversations about that recently, unfortunately. Um.
It's fine. We have a lot to do. I just, that was one thing I was really hopeful about last year.
That's, no, that's okay. I, you know, I, I think it would be a great thing going forward. So, um, yeah, we should, we should, you know, I can easily move that over and also open to, you know, I don't want to overload us with goals, but if there's something I missed on here, like whether it was an accomplishment that we did complete last year that I forgot to put on there, probably were other ones. Um, or if there's something in here that we talked about or something I didn't add, please, um, let me know because I will be taking the same document to the Board of Finance and to Town Council um, for approval and, uh, for approval for our new budget. And I think, um, there's a great benefit. I'm sure Mary Isaac would agree. If we can show what we've done, um, not only in this listing, but with some of the things that we're, um, we've worked, we've worked on, um, more likely that we'll get, um, money that we ask for, for continuing projects.
Well, one of the things that came up at the, uh, I know it's on the agenda, the Boards and Commissions Dinner, Cashew and Alls, uh, Tim and I were talking about how Conservation Commission and Sustainable Trumbull kind of overlap in certain ways, but we don't meet together. So maybe an objective would be to have a joint meeting, maybe even quarterly.
Oh, yeah.
About, cause I'm on Sustainable Trumbull, as are you and Richard and, you know, some of the things that we're, we're doing, they're not exactly the same, but they're parallel and sometimes they intersect. So it'd be great to maybe have a quarterly get together to talk about how we could collaborate. So a collaboration of those two teams might be a good thing to have as an objective.
Yeah, that is a good idea. I remember us talking about that and I completely forgot. So thank you, Pam. Yeah. Quarterly meeting with Conservation and Sustainable, um, Trumbull. Cause Sustainable Trumbull's doing some really cool things. And, you know, they're, they're kind of partners with us on that, um, Thousand Trees for Trumbull initiative as well. So I will add that, um, to the goals and objectives and objectives. And I will carry over the community gardens just to keep that conversation open.
Can I ask, where is the community garden?
It's behind the Historical Society, the Nichols Historical Society Building, the Barnes. Do you know where that is?
Society of, um,
Booth Hill. It's Booth Hill.
I know where it is. Yeah.
Yeah. So if you go to where the barns are, the, there's a white building where there's like a little mini museum. You walk up the steps, there's a whole field back there where there's apple trees. There's a couple of plots that people manage on that.
Are people using it?
Um, I would say there's probably twenty, look like twenty or so individual plots that people were using. The town goes in and tills the dirt for them. And then the gardeners go up there and do whatever they want to do. But they kind of lose interest toward the end of the year. So it kind of looks rundown and coming in.
I'd like to go take a look at it.
The one in Westport is like Disneyland. It's just gorgeous. And they have a financial, you have to have a financial stake in it if you want to plant there. But that keeps you engaged all year long. And it's, it's a long story, but it just makes so much sense.
Okay.
I mean, it's almost too bad. I think it was Mel brought up the idea by just kind of renovating that. Um, you know, incorporate some of the ideas from, from Westport, maybe some of the funding and some of the, if I had a better word, regulations on how gardeners have to have minimum, you know, standards for what they're doing. If we didn't just, you know, incorporate that into where it exists right now, without a lot of outlay for the town. I don't know how much effort that would be. But, you know, kind of a trial balloon maybe and see that would, would work with the gardeners.
Well, the other thing is, I've been here for over thirty years and I, I didn't even know about it till I joined the commission. So there's a lot of people that don't know about it.
Exactly. I'm a gardener and I didn't know it existed until Mel mentioned it. Really? And I think now with all these apartments coming into town, people who don't have a yard might be interested in having a place to garden. So I think there's a lot of things going on that would make that Westport model work. Um, you can't just dip in though. I think you really, you, you either have to say, this is the way we're going to do it, or this is the way we're not going to do it.
Yeah. How much space is there right now?
Field is enormous, but there's only so many gardeners. So it's not all used.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and, and that's, it's a good point, um, Pam, that this exists already. So it's not like we're starting a community garden from scratch. Um, it's just making this one function more efficiently for the community. And, um, you know, and it is in Nichols, um, uh, so, you know, I think there's an opportunity. They've, they've had some, um, changes at the Nichols Improvement Association, which is kind of sort of across the street. Um, and they, they have a brand new board. And, um, so it might be an opportunity to engage with them because it's a whole new group of folks who, so, so new people is always a good thing.
Do they have any interest in the garden at all? Have they mentioned that at all?
Uh, no, because it's not their property. I mean, the Nichols Improvement Association has its own forty acres to manage. So, um, but people that live in that side of town would most likely, um, use that. Community garden, I would think. So, um, yeah, let me, uh, let me pull up to show you one other thing while, while I'm finding stuff now. Um, this is the waterside buffer. So, um, Pam went on and, uh, changed the title, which is really exciting. Um, the rest, and, and then at the bottom here, she added that it's kind of a joint venture between Trumbull Conservation and Inland Wetland Water Course Commission. So, um, I have permission from Highstead for us to kind of make this our own. And, um, and talking with Vicky and, and some of her staff yesterday, um, about getting money to print this because it is a very, um, it's a bigger brochure, as you know, pretty high quality brochure. Um, so this would qualify for something like three nineteen funding, which is the Clean Water Act funding. Because these buffers that we're going to encourage people to plant, um, around our lake and water systems in town, um, is to keep the water clean. Uh, so it's very likely that we might be able to get some, uh, funding for this, uh, to be printed. And this could be, um, something that is done maybe after the summer. Do the Trumbull Tree one first. Uh, but I just like the, the way this is a teaching tool, so clear about, you know, those, the planting your buffer is better than Brita because it actually
Yeah.
filters the water. It's very simple for people to, um, uh, read and helps them to understand that they can plant their own buffer. And a lot of these plants, um, in this brochure, um, have been incorporated into, uh, if they haven't yet, a lot of the shrubs have been incorporated into, um, the Katz's Pond.
Oh, yeah.
Right? So the sweet pepper bushes there, service berries there, uh, winter berry all along the edge. So it's, um, we, you know, we're, we're being very strategic about, um, our messaging to make sure that we can use the planting demo sites, uh, that will coordinate with this booklet. So people can come to the pond and see these things live. So, um, so anyway, so Pam did that on, she also worked on the back cover. Uh, uh, so she added, uh, in the resource section, Trumbull Inland Wetlands and Conservation Commission and added our seal on the back. Um, so we've kind of made this our own and instead of reinventing the wheel, um, use information that's out there. This is a pretty important slide because it really brings home the message that putting beaches, um, on lakes is not a good idea. Uh, and I do know that of course our lake communities do have that one section, um, where it's beach because that's where everybody goes in swimming. And, you know, I for one hate walking on the bottom of, um, lakes because it's mucky. Um, but we don't need to have a beach on everybody's property because it really damages the ecosystem. So, um, so anyway, that was another fun, fun project that's kind of, uh, in the woods, in the, in the works, I should say. Um, and this other one I wanted to share is the Long Hill Green. Okay, this is the Long Hill Green, um, plant. This is, this is the, you know, where Echo is, Echo's here. Um, it's all been built. Everything's in, but, um, I think as we talked about a couple of years ago, this is a really nice suite of, um, plantings that were done here, uh, on, and, and they're there. I mean, Clether is there, the Viburnum's there. There are a lot of bees, um, in this area. So it's really was well done. But the, um, rain garden, see, they talk about the rain garden construction notes, which is really wonderful. The rain garden is, uh, I think, where is it? Here? Or is it here? I think it's here. And then there's one, no, I think it's here.
No, it's the one with the dots, isn't it?
Yes. Is it the one over to the right, Mel? To the bottom right of the?
Oh, my God, look at me. Yes. Duh. Wow. Sorry.
The one with the dots there and the one in the dots.
In the back.
Yeah, that's both the rain gardens. There's some stuff there, but not everything took.
Right.
But they need to be redone.
Right. Sorry. You're right. It's right here because it's where I parked my car and the sign is here. Uh, there's no sign in the back one. Um, but they're, they're placed strategically to clean the water before it goes into the little water.
Or, I mean, I was there with a camera and I didn't see the back one. It's very, it's, it's, um, hidden. Which is fine. It's just, as long as it gets planted. I don't.
Yeah. So we can put stuff in there that the list that, um, Pam made that, you know, really great plants and shrubs for rain garden. Um, there were two species that the owner didn't, wasn't thrilled with because of course most people have it. There's the, um, milkweed and the golden rot are always stigmatized for being, you know, bad plants. But, uh, they're really super plants that you need to have for pollinators. But, um, I think if we sneak them in back here, we won't even know it. Um, but, you know, the sign is there, but it's only grass growing. So, um, this'll, this will be a project that I think will be another one for us to, to kind of work on, um, maybe get some plantings done, um, in the spring.
Hey, um, Mel, it's really important that, you know, when you look at the narrative for the construction of it with the specifications that are followed because a lot of times the planting soil is contaminated with weed seed or what have you. And, you know, then you just end up with mugwort or something along that line. It's really, it's hard, it's hard to get them established. Um, but it's critical that, you know, the construction details, especially the soil specifications are followed. So.
There's already mugwort there.
Yeah, man.
Yeah.
And once, once it's in, it's, it's extremely hard to control.
Yeah. So there's.
Anyways, I mean, they have good notes and they have good specs, but a lot of times with the rain guards are not, uh, unless somebody adheres to them specifically, they don't get followed. So.
Yes, yes. And, you know, it is a perfect example that it's, uh, you know, they used a seed mix in here. It just didn't, didn't work. Uh, so, and that happens to all of us. So I'm, I'm just glad that they, you know, we asked and they engaged with us and said, yeah, sure. Um, they, so we'll, we'll keep you posted on that, on that one as well. Um, so that was waterside brochure. Okay. Yeah. So, um, did anyone go to the Boards and Commissions meeting? I remember that night I was unable to, to go, but.
Yeah, there, there were three of us there.
Oh. Good. Did you have a good time?
Four. April was there, me, Tim and you.
We drank. It was very good. Right, Pam?
We really tied one on with that one. That was good. It was good to sit together and, um, you know, people pretty much stayed siloed in their own little commission tables, but it was good. It's nice. It's a nice thing that the town does for volunteers. So I appreciate it.
Yeah.
We sat with Cindy Katsky. So I bent her ear a little bit. Uh, our kids actually grew up together. I haven't seen her in a long time. So I was plugging, plugging conservation the whole time.
Yeah.
That's great. Oh, I'm so glad that you went. I'm so glad you brought up Cindy Katsky because I forgot, um, in talking with Vicky and her team, uh, it was recognized that our entire Conservation Commission, our terms all expire on the same day in December of this year, which
Oh.
is completely bizarre because probably for the last ten years, when the commission was created, everyone was put into staggered slots. So some people were like in two-year, two-year terms. Some people were four-year terms. Uh, some people were one-year term. And the purpose of that was so that we didn't have everybody evacuating the premises on the same day. However, over a period of a dozen years, guess what happened? All the numbers aligned. And Cindy's totally in shock that everybody's term ends in December. So that's neither here nor there. But, um, But um. You know, hopefully we don't have a major evacuation that everybody just like quits and people want, hopefully to be reinstated. And there's no way to change what's happened. I think this is gonna happen with other boards and commissions as well, unless they change the town charter. So um, so it was just kind of a fun fact that. You know, I didn't actually see coming until she mentioned it and then I looked at our um. Our terms and sure enough. So.
We don't exist then.
Yeah, we're gonna just disappear. Yeah, all the terms because we had um Pam and Matt. Who in twenty twenty-one, their terms. Um, ended and then they were reinstated. And by doing that, they were put into two-year seats. And that just brought Pam and Matt right up to the rest of us and we all expire in twenty twenty-three December. So. Just keep that in mind. I hope we have enough fun this year that you guys are just not gonna jump ship and you're just gonna stay on. So we can continue the fun and games that we're doing here at Conservation.
You're probably stuck with us for a while.
Oh, good. Okay. That would be great. So um, that is kind of all I had to talk about. I know I've been dominating this whole thing, but I just. Wanted to get us kicked off for this coming year.
It's good. It's a lot of good stuff.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone, I mean, one of the things that I want to propose for Sustainable Trumbull. And I kind of mentioned this to Dimitri a little bit on our tree walk that day. But I want to do like a litter awareness campaign for the town.
Yes.
As you know, Mel, because I I overshare. But every day, literally every day when I walk, I clean up around town. Um. And there's so much litter and it's disgusting and I feel like we really need a reset. So uh, I'm gonna see about doing some sort of a litter awareness campaign around town. And as an aside, I don't know if you guys know this, maybe John, you might know this. You know those political signs with the wire and the corrugated? Are those, are there any communities that have forbidden those?
Yes.
Most of them end up on the side of the road.
Yes, Greenwich, uh, New Canaan for sure. Uh, they pull them right out if they see them. Uh, maybe Darien also.
Well, in Greenwich, we allow political signs uh during the political season and then they're, they gotta be picked up. As soon as the election's over with. Yeah, and as far as those standalone signs for Joe's soccer camp, they really don't allow it, yeah.
Even our own library put up signs about something they were doing and they're still up. Um, I brought a bunch of them to the dump today because I had some in my garage that I've been picking up off the side of the road. So I just was. Curious about that. Thank you.
Yeah, John, is there a better alternative than those signs?
Those signs.
And then those posts?
It's just they're inexpensive.
Yeah.
And the problem is the people that put them out. I mean, some people. Some businesses try to leave them out permanently. But, you know, the problem is the tag sales and the special events like uh, actually the Trumbull Center had a. Um, Trumbull Library had a slideshow. That's probably what you're talking about. About the valley and the uh trains that went through it. They just leave them out there and they don't pick them up. So, yeah, there's, there's real no alternative. I think in, I think in uh New Canaan. They actually told all of their um. Uh, all of their workers, their town workers uh to go around and whenever they saw them, pick them up.
Hmm.
The sign and the uh, the posts?
Yeah, the sign and the stakes, yeah.
Yeah.
The stakes are really brutal. Those things never go away.
No, they're not biodegradable at all. They'll last forever in a landfill.
Hmm.
Yeah. Can they be recycled?
Not really.
Well, the ones I brought to the dump today, the cardboard part had to go in the trash, but the metal. Stakes that go in the ground went into the metal recycling, but it's, you know.
Oh, I didn't know they were, I didn't know they're cardboard. The ones we usually make are um. It looks like corrugated cardboard, but it's plastic.
That's what I meant. That that had to go in the garbage.
Right, yeah.
The metal part went into the metal recycling bin.
Right.
But they're everywhere.
Pam, how about signs and say, those same signs all over town, your mother doesn't live here, put your garbage in the garbage can?
Well, I mean. I I, Mel, Mel knows, I picked up fifty pounds. In one day on Daniel's, just a short part of Danielson Road, plus a hundred and nine bottles and cans. And that was just in about two hours.
The only way to, the only way to solve it is either you incentivize or you punish.
Punish, yes. I'm all for punishing.
The only way to solve it.
In the valley, um, my daughter and I were um. Went in from, I think it's Park Drive or Park Street.
Park Street.
And we went into the valley on the other side. And I always bring a garbage bag with me. And uh, my daughter scolded me because I didn't have a garbage bag, but we found a box and we were walking around picking up garbage. Uh, and then I noticed that on the path. People are cleaning up after their dogs, but what they're doing is they're cleaning up. They're tying a plastic bag and they're leaving it on the side of the path.
Yes.
Uh, they'd be better off to kick it in the woods.
Why? Why are you bagging it if you're just gonna leave it?
Yeah.
I I just don't get it.
Somebody left a sofa on the east side over there, John.
I saw it.
And uh, we fin- I finally got the town to go get the sofa. They looked it out, but they they left the cushions, so I went and got the cushions, but that's gone now.
Yeah, I thought, I actually thought I missed it because I didn't see it last week.
It's gone.
Um, yeah, you know, it would almost be good and I'd donate them if we could. Put up signs that, you know, for some kind of etiquette, uh, because they have those kiosks. I'd be happy to do that in the parks or whatever. Uh, we'd have to get permission, but it it would be good to. You know, ask people, you know, tell people what we, what is expected of them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean. People who are leaving the garbage are the people who really don't care anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I think that, I think that what happens is um, and I hate to say it. Um, sportsmen by the um, sportsmen by the uh, by the stream. What happens is the sportsmen that come out. And they're the guys that come out the first two weeks of fishing season that don't really spend a lot of time in the woods. Um, they don't think anything of leaving their trash around. Um, and there's a lot of kids that swim down there and I've gone down there and actually picked up clothes. And and they're hanging from the trees. One week I filled the garbage bag with clothes. And um, I I I'm not sure if they went home naked or not. Because there were that many clothes. I I can't imagine. Um, a- and, you know, I would hope that the sportsmen that are really. Out there in nature all the time, um, don't do that. And I I feel that they don't generally. I mean, anybody could drop something. Things happen and you don't realize you dropped it. But um.
Yeah, I think the the uh, the the holy grail for me was picking up the disposable diapers that were left.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, that's just. I don't care. That's just, I don't care to me. But anyway, I could go on forever and I just wanted to mention. That I'm gonna do that with Sustainable Trumbull if I can get anybody to help me. I'm sure I can. And do some, maybe do something in the Trumbull Times and publicly shame, talk about. Teach your children. I mean, I I I grew up with the crying Indian commercials. It would never occur to me to throw up my window, you know? But.
Do we, do you, does Sustainable do the coordination with the tidy up Trumbull? Was that the women's?
The Trumbull Community Women does tidy up Trumbull. They do it. I think a couple of years ago, they asked us to join them. And I don't think they asked us to join last year. We do, we. Sustainable Trumbull does does cleanups all the time, but we we don't do like once a year type events so much.
No, but maybe it'd be good as a public thing to do it with them, you know?
Publicize it before that.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people clean up that day. People are all over town cleaning up that one day. It just doesn't carry over.
Yeah, I I don't, I just don't get it. I don't get it. And our preserves too, all of our preserves. And the worst preserve is. Probably in the most exclusive neighborhood in Westport. Um, it's just like a sense of entitlement. You know, they come into our preserve, which is. Private property, but we let them hike in there and we put a sign up also, you know, there is no, there is no poo fairy. And they piled all their dog poo, um, you know, bags around the sign on the. Like it does not say leave your waste here. It says take your waste home. There is no poo.
That's a passive aggressive. There should be.
It is. It is. It's just crazy, so.
Hey, Mel, I gotta check out.
All right, Tim.
I gotta, so, all right. See you guys.
Thanks for your help. Thanks, everybody. I guess we can now close the meeting unless we want to talk about poo bags anymore.
I could go on forever.
Okay.
My second emotion.
All right. Thank you. Let's close the meeting and it was great to see everybody. And thank you for your help, Barbara and Bill. Again, appreciate it.
And I'm not gonna be here in March, so I'll see you guys in April.
Oh, yeah, so.